Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Oh, Peter, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Great, thank you.
So we're just short stand, usually rolls right in on time.
And Brett? Right, see? Maybe he's crucified that.
Can you hear me okay with this mask on?
I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dad, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, Christie, I can hear you just fine.
I'm in the process of combining late correspondence documents. Councilor Warren sent me another piece that was not received before I uploaded. So it should be up there on the website in about five minutes.
Okay, and then if you want to email me a copy of it, if I don't already have it.
I believe you do. It was sent by Sophie.
Hello, Dan. Hello, Brett.
Hi, Brett. Chad, are we ready to vote?
One more piece of correspondence here.
Okay, folks, we're gonna start momentarily. We're getting one more piece of late correspondence.
If we could have everyone but council and staff mute their phone or device, that would be great.
Hello, everyone.
Hi. We're just waiting for Chad to get a clarification on a late late piece of correspondence.
I have to go like this because I can read it perfectly clear, but I can't see. Like a little lady with her hat on.
We've got it ready here.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Okay, folks, good evening. This is the October 12, 2021 Special City Council meeting. And we're gonna start with a public hearing this evening about a proposed contractor work hours ordinance number 930. And I just want to explain first, this is a revision of the existing general offenses ordinance for Gerhart number 130.03, which was originally approved or passed in February of 2014 as ordinance 876. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing at this time. Those in the audience, if you'd like to testify, please provide your name and address and whether you wish to be notified of the decision. We will have a three-minute speaking time if you wish to address the council. Counselors, do you have any need to disclose or abstain from participating on the matter because of possible financial gain from the action?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest and reclusive myself from tonight's meeting. I am muting my microphone and my video feed at this time.
Thank you, Carrie.
I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest. And I say potential because we don't work weekends. Weekends anyways, so. That's my position.
Okay, so we have one declaring a conflict of interest, Counselor Smith, and one potential conflict of interest from Counselor Jesse. Any others?
I do not have a conflict. Dan, I'd like to ask a question. So none of your subcontractors work on weekends as well?
Not for my projects. I can't say what they do for somebody else's projects, but no.
Okay, for your projects, that was what I was wondering.
And I have no conflict of interest, Rita. You are muted. I saw you shake your head.
I have no conflict of interest.
Thank you. Does the audience have any challenge to impartiality of the remaining counselors? If you do, you should unmute. We're gonna move on then to the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counselors. So this is discussion ordinance 930 ordinance regarding regulating contractor work hours in the city of Gerhart. The synopsis is the city has received correspondence over the last few months regarding noise associated with contractor and landscaper work. Council discussed the topic in a work session with Chief Bowman. Public testimony on the topic was taken at the August City Council meeting where two draft ordinances regarding contractor work hours were presented. One excluding work on Sundays, one excluding work on Saturdays and Sundays. Attached to the draft chosen by the council motion at the meeting, which excludes work on Sundays. Further testimony was also received earlier in tonight's meeting during the public hearing. Excuse me.
Well, we are.
Will be received. So your options, once you get through this, is to approve or attach the ordinance reading once by title only after the public hearing. Make changes to the approved motion as amended, or do nothing, including tabling for future discussions. At this time, staff does not have any recommendation, as this is up to the council.
And just to be clear for the council, we will take action when we open the regular city council meeting after the public hearing. Are there any proponents to the ordinance who would like to speak from the audience?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The name and address.
And can you start with your name and address, please?
Certainly. Sheila Nolan, 724 Creekside Court, Gerhart, Oregon.
Go ahead, Sheila.
Good evening, Mayor Cochrane, city counselors, and neighbors. My name is Sheila Nolan, and I am one of the Gerhart property owners who put forth a proposal to change the hours contractors work in our community. I would like to note all of the participants in this effort are property owners and taxpayers within Gerhart. The reason behind this proposal is due to the increased construction all over the city of Gerhart, and our desire to have current work hours enforced in time in which we can enjoy Gerhart without the disruption of noise created by commercial activities. This has become more critical as the pandemic has kept many of us homebound. It was suggested that Gerhart, Oregon was more restrictive to contractors than Carmel, California, an interesting city for comparison. I looked at their website and followed up with a call to Sullivan at the Carmel Building Department. For those of you thinking of moving, Carmel does not permit construction on Sundays and strongly discourages working hours on holidays. Additional cities within Oregon also prohibit construction on Sundays. During the 80s and 90s, I was co-owner of a residential construction business in Oregon. I can assure you contractors will be working throughout the four seasons and are well-equipped despite our weather. You may consider yourself an entitled retiree who has recently relocated to the community, but I certainly do not see myself fitting that description, and neither do a lot of our community members. My neighbors include teachers, coasties, parents working and teaching children from home, attorneys, contractors, groundkeepers, business owners, scientists, first responders, retail clerks, house cleaners, developers, doctors, volunteers, and hospice patients. I believe that every citizen of Gerhart is entitled to have at least one day off a week to enjoy quiet family and friends. The Proporo's ordinance is for one day, one day only, Sunday. I would also like to address allegations of conflict of interest. Yes, Counselor Warren is my husband. Francis fulfilling a vital role in our community as a volunteer with no ties to any construction or landscaping business, which would create an actual or potential conflict of interest. As a citizen, I did not lose my voice or my vote as a result of his appointment. Thank you for your integrity, consideration, and commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other proponents who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor. My name is Rob Murphy. I'm at 747 Creekside Court. I am a new resident to Gerhart. Love and really enjoy the community, and that's the reason we picked the house where we're at. This is a second home for us, unlike many folks in the community. And like many folks in the community, we use this as a place of respite. It's also new construction, so I've kind of planned both sides here, quite honestly, to say I'm for some moderate growth. And I'm also for, you know, having the life balance. And I believe in support of this, having some time to enjoy the community while carefully growing the community is a balancing act. But I would support the fact that there is time where we can enjoy the community during this growth spurt that the community is experiencing. And I just wanted to throw my support behind that. As a new owner, as someone had those contractors at their house, I'm okay and have been okay with delaying construction and having that play out for the benefit of the community and as an example of that. And also would appreciate the strong consideration for me to enjoy the time with my family, with this community on those times off, especially on a Sunday. I work from there quite often. My wife does as well. Nowhere near retired. We're gonna continue to do that. And that balance is really important to us and is what has attracted us to Gerhart. And I would hope to preserve that now and in the future and throw my support as a proponent on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other proponents?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is BB Michelle. I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
I'll give you the benefit of the video too. Hello, everyone. I'm actually speaking on behalf of. Yep, BB Michelle and. 661 10th Street. So we have written this as well, but we just want to say that we are in support of this ordinance. The proposed change in the ordinance just excludes work on Sundays. And we feel that's a really fair and reasonable compromise between the needs of the Gerhart residents for peace and quiet and the needs of contractors and landscapers to provide services to their clients. You know, residents should be entitled a one day a week free of construction noise, machinery noise, just to be able to enjoy their homes and their gardens in peace. It's a relief to have some quiet after days and days of hammering noise, machinery noise, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, which, you know, we all kind of are experiencing now. We understand houses need to be built and repaired and gardens need to be maintained. We understand construction companies and landscaping companies have a job to do and need to be able to make a living, but, you know, companies should also understand our needs of the people in the community. We think it's important and fair that residents have one day a week of peace and quiet in their own homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to be speaking as a proponent? Christie, does anyone have a hand raised?
Not that I can see.
Thank you. Gonna move on to opponents. Would anyone who opposes this ordinance change like to speak? I do not see anyone unmuting. Christie, does anyone have their hand raised?
They do not. I'm just seeing a couple of names, though, that we did receive correspondence from. I'm not sure if you want to poll them.
Deanna Mansell is not muted.
Deanna Mansell, we don't see that you're muted. Would you like to speak? I think we're gonna move on.
That's all that I see. I'm muted.
Next, we'll move on to neutral testimony. Would anyone like to speak with neutral testimony? Okay. Chris? I saw Kristen's iPad.
I think that was just a noise coming from her. She's been unmuted. Nope, she's muted.
Okay, she's muted. Okay.
I'm not. I've had trouble figuring it out, the process. I'm sorry. I am in support of the ordinance to have construction noise limited to Monday through Saturday.
Ms. Chris, would you mind giving us your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Chris Bell. My address is P O Box 2833 Gerhart, Oregon.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. And not seeing anyone else, I'm going to close the public input portion of the hearing. And at this time, I'm gonna open the city council meeting for October 12. Is there any declaration of a conflict of interest from any of the counselors?
None from me.
I'll restate my potential.
Dan has restated this. Go ahead.
Oh, I was apologizing for not being able to find my mute button, so I have no conflict.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, and I'll be reclusive myself from this portion of the meeting.
Thank you all, and I have no conflict of interest. Next, we have correspondence on the matter in our packet ordinance 930. And council has all received these previously. We have two that were opponents. One was submitted from Mr. Bob Moore and another from Tim Mansell. And three letters that were proponents. One from Sheila Nolan, one from BB Michelle, and one from David Smith or David and Betty Smith.
This one was on the back of that one.
And also one from Deanna Mansell. Any comments from anyone on any of the correspondence we received? Okay, and now we have a visitor section. Visitors, if you would like to speak, we ask that you email Chad Sweet at cityofyourheart.com. And to my knowledge, David Kohler has done that already and would like to speak.
And, you know, this is a visitor section. Anything that doesn't have to do with the particular issue I'm on.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know, Lisa and I experienced that house fire on Friday night on North Cottage, and I just, I've written down a couple of things here. It's been an exhausting few days, but I feel it's important to us to take some time to express our deep gratitude for the volunteer Gerhart Fire Department. Our fire chief was actually on site only eight minutes after my wife Lisa called 911. I think this is an incredibly quick response time, and I think that this should give some comfort to the community that our fire department, our volunteer fire department can respond to an emergency that quickly. This quick response time by the Gerhart Fire Department saved most of my house, saved my neighbor's house. The fire was very close to the top of their cedar roof, and the fire department did a fabulous job not, you know, letting the fire grow. Also, I never imagined that as my house was burning, volunteers. Sorry, I'm still a little bit emotional about it. Volunteers were actually inside the house trying to save our personal belongings. In fact, at one point, at one point, a firefighter came up to us and asked if there was anything of particular sentimental value that he could try to recover out of the burning house. My first thought at that moment was that guy looks a lot like our city manager. Lisa, obviously very distressed at the moment and devastated, tells the firefighter her late father's photographs are in the corner of the house where the fire started. I think, babe, those memories, those photographs are gone. A few minutes later, that firefighter comes out of the house with that bin of Lisa's memorabilia. When I saw that firefighter with that bin of photographs, that was a moment for me. I knew at that moment that things had turned around in a more positive direction. That firefighter is our city manager Chad Scott. our city manager Chad Scott. Sorry, Chad Sweet. As I'm reflecting on this particular moment, I recognize that Chad's actions are the qualities that represent the true kind of leadership we have in our community and city leaders. Not only can they manage a quickly developing crisis, but also recognize the moment when it is necessary to comfort those affected. We are lucky to live in a community with this type of leadership. I am also so impressed with our volunteers. These men and women are an incredible asset to our community. This community, to be able to continue the quick response time, needs a new fire station. We need to continue to have the resources to come to our assistance in our times of need. Some things are just worth paying for. You might not realize it, so you're standing outside your home in the middle of the night with a garden hose, and you want help to come as quickly as they possibly can. We need to fund this fire station. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Gerhart Volunteer Fire Department. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave and Lisa.
Do we need his address?
Yes, please.
Dave, can you just give us your name and address, please?
All right, here. David Kohler, 967 North Cottage.
Thank you, and we all wish you well.
Thank you.
Any other visitors?
Are there any other visitors who would like to speak?
No.
And Kristi, does anyone have their hand up?
Not that I can see.
Okay, we're going to move on then to ordinance 930, the next item of business. This is the ordinance regulating contractor hours in the city of Gerhart.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, and I hope this is the time to ask it. I would like clarification on one of the statements under exemptions on this ordinance.
We should have probably a motion, and then we can go to discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 930.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance. And a second, we have two councilors who are abstaining from the discussion. Rita, go ahead with your. Oh, I'm sorry.
I expressed a potential public interest. I didn't say that I.
Oh, so you are? Okay, I'm sorry. So Rita, go ahead.
Thank you. On the proposed ordinance 930, under the section that's called exemptions, and there's one, two, three, four statements, the third statement says, in case of emergencies, contractors or employees are exempt from general prohibition one and two, but it doesn't say what the emergencies could be or who could say this is an emergency. Perhaps a contractor says, I have to get this work done. It's an emergency. So I was looking through the proposed ordinance, and I couldn't find any definition of who would declare an emergency or what an emergency is, and that is my question.
I can address that. The.
Thank you, Peter.
The reason that we have that language in there is that there are situations where, you know, a tree hits a roof, where there is a need, you know, a roof blows off due to heavy wind, something like that, and we wanted a little bit of flexibility in it so that in that sort of situation where, you know, the difference of working at that point versus not working, even if it's just putting up tarps, could be the difference between having catastrophic damage or not. And so our hope would be that to the extent that somebody was using this emergency exemption, that they were using it legitimately. We wanted, when Chad and I discussed it, we wanted flexibility in there rather than prescribing these sort of circumstances with the understanding if then people were abusing that, we would need to come back in and look at the ordinance. So that's why we drafted it in the way that we do. Most of the contractors in Gerhart are frequently do work in Gerhart, and I think from a reputational standpoint and everything else, I would hope that they wouldn't abuse that, and they have not in the past. So our hope is that they would continue with the understanding if there was someone that was frequently declaring emergencies, we would probably take action.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, this is not an area that has been changed. This is in the existing ordinance.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'm curious if a professional, I'll say, I'll use myself as an example. If I'm working on my own home on Sunday, I don't see that that's spelled out specifically one way or the other. If it's a non-professional, my belief is that people can work on their own home, whether it's mow their lawn, build their fence, or whatever the case may be. But if it's a professional, where does that stand? And to be clear, I'm talking about on their own residence, not somebody else's, but yeah. Thank you, Dan, and counsel. So I think in the definitions of contractors, maybe this part is in there. The definition of contractor is a person that for compensation or with the intent to sell a range or undertakes offer or undertakes or submits to build, construct, alter, repair, or add to. So it's really built into compensation and the thing. So in my view, it's not exclusively in this, but in my view, if you were working on your own home, even though you are a contractor, that you would be free to do so as long as you weren't paying yourself. Okay. Does that sound about right, Peter?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, again, we want to, the purpose of our ordinance is to inform people so that they can follow the kind of the rules in the city. From an enforcement standpoint, if somebody complained that you were building a fence and Chief Bowman showed up, and it was your house, I can't, I just can't imagine that he would be, you would be cited. But the other thing is because you're entitled to substantial deference in interpreting your own ordinance, if the consensus of the council tonight is that it would apply to somebody working regardless of whether they're a licensed contractor or not, then that would be part of the record, and it would be something that you could rely upon and the chief Bowman could rely upon as well. So I think to the extent that that's what you intend as the council, that you could make that clear tonight during your comments.
Thank you, Peter.
Madam Mayor, I just have one more question.
Okay, go ahead, Rita.
Thank you. And that's under the paragraph that's called enforcement. And the statement I'm just going to read, I don't understand what it means, and so I'm just hoping that you guys can tell me what it means. It's the last sentence under enforcement, and it says, "Nothing in this subchapter shall prevent the city administrator or police chief from obtaining voluntary compliments by way of warning, notice, or education." What does that mean?
So for contractors that do work in the city, the chief Bowman's practice has been to warn them about the ordinance before citing them. The other thing, the other, in talking to Chief Bowman, the other way that this is coming up is that if he sees a crew assembled, but they haven't started work, he tells them, you guys can't start work until time X. That's why we have that language in there to make sure that he has that flexibility to educate people before citing them.
All right, thanks.
So let me go back and just find out if there is a consensus of the council who are participating that we want to make it clear in the public record that a contractor working on his own home or her own home would not be subject to fine if they were working on Sunday. Is that a consensus?
If I suppose after hours, we'd be the same thing.
Or.
You know, a landscaper mows his lawn after work at night.
After 6:00 PM.
Right. I think that's.
Yeah, that sounds perfectly reasonable interpretation of the ordinance. So yes, I would concur with that.
And Rita?
I agree.
And I do as well. So we do have a consensus. Thank you, Dan, for bringing that up. And Brent, do you have any questions or other discussion?
Oh, I just like to say, it's been said before, but the original proposal brought before us was to focus on noise, not days worked. That approach was changed at the recommendation of Chief Bowman, and the initial request was for Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. So this is a significantly scaled back request. So it is a good compromise. I know nobody's really super happy with it, but it is a compromise, and that's what society is about, is finding reasonable compromise. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Brent. And my comment is just that for myself, being the mayor, we don't take these situations lightly. I have talked to many, many folks in Gerhart, had enough nights with trouble sleeping. So, you know, that's what we're here for, is to work through some of these issues. And sometimes it's not easy, but if there is no other comments at this time, are we ready to have a vote then?
Yep.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Three ayes, one nay, and one abstention. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ding all.
Good night.
Dave, thanks for the comments. I'll pass those along to the other firefighters. Thank you very much.